I'd like to call this Dalton, Barnet, Woodville County Commission Joint Meeting with the Woodville County Board of Commissioners to order for September 22nd, 2025. Turn it over to Chairman Litterdale.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we do have 11 requests to deal with. 10 are in the county, one is in the city. Before we get to that, I'd like to declare there is a quorum. We have the full house tonight, all members present. Review the minutes from the previous meeting. Any additions, deletions, corrections? Motion?
So, move to be approved.
For a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Before we get to this, Mr. Ethan Calhoun from the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission will review the procedures and requirements for those who'd like to speak out for tonight's program. Ethan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, out front, you'll find on the table printed agendas. If you'd like a copy of the agenda to follow along tonight, please feel free to grab one. There should be plenty. You'll see the agenda on the screen there, and that will essentially guide our meeting from item to item. And for each item on the agenda, the same procedure will follow, and that is, first and foremost, Chairman will introduce the item up for discussion. I'll come forward to the podium and give a brief report and recommendation from the staff perspective. Once my comments have been heard, the Chairman will ask for the petitioner, that's the individual who's requesting to rezone their property, to come forward and answer any questions that may come up, make any additional statements. Once the petitioner's comments have been heard, the Chairman's going to ask if anyone other than the petitioner would like to speak in favor of that rezoning or that item on the agenda. Once all comments in favor of that item have been heard, the Chairman is going to offer an opportunity for anyone who'd like to speak in opposition or give any reasons why it shouldn't be approved. So, you'll want to come forward to the podium, one at a time, make your statements. It's very important that if you are here tonight to speak in opposition, which is state law that in order for us to be able to insert your comments into the record, we'll need you to fill out a release form, and that form is out front on the table with the agendas. There's some for the county and some for the city. If you're not sure whether your item you're speaking in opposition to is in the city or the county, have a look at the agenda. We put it right at the end in parentheses. So, just make sure to note what item you're speaking in opposition for. Fill out your name, sign it, and make sure to print your name very clearly so that as we type up the record, we can get your comments accurately written in the record. So, with that being said, once the opposition's remarks have been heard, the Chairman's going to give an opportunity to the petitioner to come back and address any of the issues raised in the opposition's remarks. And if during the petitioner's rebuttal, there's no new information introduced, Chairman will then close the public hearing, move to the next item. There'll be no further public comment heard on that item for the rest of the evening. So, make sure if you'd like to make a comment, you do make that when the hearing is open. And then, again, that same procedure will follow suit through the meeting. Once the public hearings have been heard, the Chairman will move into the regular meeting, and that's where the Planning Commission will deliberate, make a recommendation that will be sent forward to the Board of Commissioners and the City Council and Mayor Dalton. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Ethan. The first request is to hear from Shazman Ali. Are you here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. To rezone from medium-density, single-family R3 to general commercial C2, 10.66 acres, located along Antioch Drive. This is in the county. Ethan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, before us here is a rezoning of a property, and we have the request is to rezone from R3 medium-density residential to general commercial. I would like to point out for the Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners, that the staff analysis introduction does have an incorrect typo regarding the requested current and requested zone district. So, the correct one you see on the screen, again, is to be rezoned from its current R3 zoning to general commercial. So, that's the request before us. So, when we look at the zoning map, we'll see the subject property is zoned R3, and the property was rezoned last time in January of 2024. And that rezoning was from its original zoning of R2 to R3, as it is today. So, we can see this island of R3. It's adjacent to quite a number of R2 lots. You can see in that light green color to the southwest. You can also see the R5 rural residential zone district to the south. And then, to the north, we do see the general commercial zone, as well as heavy manufacturing to the east and west. We look at the actual development in the area. We do see some manufacturing to the east and west. But, again, the immediately adjacent western property is actually developed for residential use, with the majority of other adjacent properties being single-family residential Closer look at the subject property. It is undeveloped currently. The proposal that the petitioner has is to essentially develop a service station or gas station-type convenience store, I believe, on the property, and the petitioner can give a little bit more information about exactly what their plans or proposals are for this property. Here is a quick note just to point out. This property is heavily impacted by the floodway and the floodplain. So, we can see the cross-hatched areas, whereas that 100-year floodplain, you can see in the yellow color on the screen. And so, that makes it a challenging property to develop regardless of the zoning. So, this is something to keep in mind. There again, some more of the topography and waterway on the subject property. And within the joint comprehensive plan, this property's within the suburban neighborhood character area. And, of course, the intent of the suburban neighborhood character area is to protect the integrity of existing suburban neighborhoods in the county. So, what we can see here is the subject property, having not been developed, is adjacent to quite a number of residentially-developed lots, most of which have been developed, have been well-maintained, and are in the R2 zone district. So, by rezoning the subject property to C2, and the fact that the majority, if we go back and look at the floodplain and floodway, and floodway essentially means no construction. Floodplain, there can be with a base flood elevation study and additional work to be done there, so there's some potential for development of the site. But if you'll notice, the portion of the site that would be used for the buffer for commercial property being adjacent to residential is adjacent to all the single-family residential properties. So, that's going to make buffering very difficult. So, another factor to point out here, that that floodplain does impact and would impact the integrity of that existing single-family neighborhood. So, with that in mind, the staff recommendation for this rezoning is a denial, and I would be happy to...
Can I ask a question, Ethan?
Yes, sir.
So, when you look at the aerial map, and you know, that area is heavily industrialized. I mean, there's a huge Mohawk or Aladdin, I don't know if it's Mohawk, across the road, Garland Sales is there someplace. And those are in areas that says future emerging suburban, but right now, it's got very large, heavy manufacturing facilities on there. So, I'm just confused as to why that shows emerging suburban in an area that's been historically industrial for decades.
Yeah, that's a good point. So, when you deal with these areas where you have suburban, a lot of these areas where you've got, like in the case of the property next to the subject property, and the subject property itself, which was zoned residential, where you have kind of these converging districts when you're doing the comprehensive plan updates, some of these areas, you get in converging areas overlaps where that emerging suburban character area really shouldn't be in the industrial zone.
Because those plants were there well before that map was ever created for future development.
That was consequences of the Unified Plan Commission.
Yeah.
When they used change colors the way they wanted.
Okay.
And this is not the only site that is that way.
Ethan? On the site plan, where, right there on Antioch Road, there's a bump in the...
Property line?
Property line?
A little red.
That's Georgia Power, I believe. So, that sub, there's a substation right across the front of that, and then, so there's a small out parcel on the subject property that, I don't know if it's an easement or if they have infrastructure there, but that's Georgia Power, I believe. It's a utility.
So, that... Okay. Any other questions? Gentlemen? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ali?
May I pass out some literature to y'all regarding this project?
Yes, first state your name and address for the record.
Shazman Ali, 932 Lake Street, Dalton, Georgia, 30721. I'd like to bring this up.
Just start on one, just one on the end.
I've also got just four copies of some engineering studies. I'll just leave them right here if y'all would like to see them. They're just general regarding the project. And then, I've got, I've got two copies of, I've printed out currently, you know, the future development plan and where all the factories are, where all the commercial is, and then one just the current zoning as well. So, yeah, these are two copies. I'll just hand them off after.
Okay. Can you see me?
Yes, sir. There's two copies of each of the plans.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, good evening, everyone. My name is Shazman Ali. I'm here to respectfully present my case regarding the rezoning request from R3 to C2. Appreciate the staff's careful review and recommendation, but I would like to offer a rebuttal, addressing the concerns and explain why this rezoning makes sense, both for the property and for the surrounding community. So, as far as the compatibility with surrounding uses, while the staff analysis points to nearby residential uses, it is important to remember that my property directly adjoins existing C2 commercial and M2 manufacturing zoning. This makes my property uniquely positioned to serve as a transition area between the heavier commercial and industrial activity and the nearby residential neighborhood. And I would like to point out on the site plan, Ethan, if you could go to that site plan that I'd submitted. The question regarding that bump, it is a Georgia Power easement, so it's not actually its own parcel, it's just an easement, according to the survey. And the gas station that I would build right in the front, it fits within the existing areas where it is buildable and we're not directly impacted by the floodway or the floodplain, which is a major challenge on this property. I have tried, and I have spent almost $50,000 just on engineering and studies and, you know, the whole works with this property. It is difficult splitting the property into residential lots due to the various challenges and lots of ordinances we have, one of them being that when you subdivide a property, it needs to be 70% in, 70% not in the flood zone or floodway. So, it's just making this project, I mean, as far as residential, extremely difficult to do. And the other benefit, I would say that, would be for this project is the gas station just by itself, from a property tax perspective, one gas station would be equivalent to almost six or seven houses, and it's not putting any additional strain on your sewer capacity or your roads. So, that's what the commercial benefit would be for this property. And as you can see from the site plan, I have put in a 20-foot buffer, we do have a road, and then, we've got the actual gas station, a part of the project. The site to the north, that is a future truck and auto repair site, could be used to service the cars that are filling at the station, or repair heavy equipment, or anything of that sort. The area is highly commercial and filled with M2 zoning, so I don't see why this would be against any kind of usage. I know there's this, there is this subdivision that's right underneath me, right to the left of my property, but it is higher density than the R2 suggests, and most of the other, you know, housing in the area is either R5, or as you saw, there's a R4-0 lot line as well. So, it's not a traditional, you know, suburban, like I understand that the future development plan and this area is categorized as suburban residential, but it is very blended, it's very mixed, and it's heavily manufacturing and it's commercial. As far as the environmental and floodplain concerns, as you can see from the engineering report, there is a significant issue, especially from the houses. I know this property was, or the adjacent lots were developed many years ago, but a lot of their stormwater does run right onto my property. And by making this a commercial site, we're better able to manage all the floodplain issues, all the stormwater issues, and it's consolidated to a much smaller footprint that would actually work for the property. So, just in closing remarks, the property is directly adjacent to commercial and industrial zoning. The infrastructure is in place with no capacity concerns as far as sewer goes, and the development will bring economic growth and the convenience without burdening schools or public services. In fact, the nearest gas station here is a little more than a mile away, and that is on Abutment Road. There isn't anything from this point on towards the south bypass. So, this would, you know, address a real need in the community. And with thoughtful designs, buffers, and stormwater management, we can address the concerns that are raised in the staff's recommendation regarding the flooding of this property. So, if there's any questions, I'd love to answer them.
Just curious. C2 allows you to build a maximum height of 140 feet. Are you planning on using 140 feet?
No, sir. All the, I currently have three gas station projects around the city that are currently under construction. We're going maximum about 25 feet.
And that's just the canopy over the pumps, right?
Yes, sir. Well, the canopy for the pumps, those are like 15 feet under and then another four feet, so those will get up to about 20 feet. The actual building, again, maximum 20 feet. So, they're typically all one-story. There's no point in putting a second story, so...
So, should this be a C1 or C4? Just curious. Why'd you pick C2?
All the adjacent properties are C2. That's the, yes, sir. And if you, if y'all look at the zoning map, you can see that three-quarters of my property is covered by either M2 or C2 zoning. So, it does fit the characteristic of the area. So, I'm not asking for something that's not consistent with what's already there.
On this design here, is that the right-of-way for the power, right on the road?
I'm sorry, could I, could I see that?
What you got on the screen?
Sure.
Right on the road there, is that the power easement?
No. Yes, sir. So, the power easement's actually, it's the first 25 or 50 feet of the road, so it's not an actual, like, rectangle, it's more on the, on like Antioch Road.
Okay, I guess.
Yes, sir.
So, those are your pumps right there, what I'm looking at?
Yes, sir. Those will be well and clear of the easement. Or if there is any kind of conflict, I mean, I'm pretty confident Georgia Power would work with us. They've so far worked with us on the others, on the other sites, so...
Now, your truck repair workshop back there, I mean, that's just additional use of the land.
Correct, yes, sir.
Without that, we wouldn't need the road going all the way back there.
Correct, correct. That is, that would be phase two. The first phase would be towards the front of the property, because to get that road to the back, we would have to do a full FEMA study of the entire property. Whereas, just for the gas station portion of it, which is right on the front, that one fits within the existing areas that are not in the floodway or the floodplain. So, that would be a more simple project. And if that is working great, then we can explore the idea of taking it back. And then, of course, with the roads, we'll be going through flood, flood zones, basically. So, a more proper FEMA study would be done. At this point, I've gotten surveys done, and I had gotten engineering done for the residential, but this site, as far as the engineering goes, it's determined where the wetlands are, and based off the existing flood zones, the gas station would not be part of that flood zone. It would just be that road that would connect to the back part of the property, which is also another good part of the property that's not in any of the flood zones or the floodway.
Can you remind me how big the buffer's going to be again?
20 feet, sir. And it's just going to be on the left part of the property where the houses are right now. So, I mean, I can easily accommodate the 20-foot buffers, I can easily accommodate a 50-foot road, and we would still be buffered from the neighbors that are there.
Questions? Tell them. All right, thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor? Is there anybody who'd like to speak in opposition? Very well. We will close the public portion on this request and move on to the next. Next one is from Janet Adams. Are you here? Very good, thank you. This is to rezone from GA to R1, 1.42 acres on Crow Valley Road, which is in the county. Ethan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The petitioner's request, rezone from general agriculture to R1 state residential, small tract of land here that's currently undeveloped. The petitioner's request is made in order to divide this property as an estate planning effort. So, if we look at the subject property here, we can see that it's part of a larger tract of land, and what this rezoning would do would create the opportunity to divide it off as a smaller tract of land than five acres, which is the minimum size. The lot has to be in the general agriculture zone district. So, we can see here, this area is heavily dominated by the general agriculture zone district, but we do see that low-density, single-family R2 in the nearby area. So, we do see some of that single-family detached, low-density development. And the estate residential zone district, of course, is about as, the most conservative residential district that we have in the Unified Zoning Ordinance, so even more restricted than R2. So, we would see no expectation for any sort of negative impact on the property values in this area, and no issues with creating any sort of problem on the zoning map, because GA and R1 would be compatible in this instance. And we can see that the aerial view will show the property and the area around it mostly being kind of larger lots, single-family detached type of development, so less agricultural than the zoning map might indicate, more low-density, single-family residential. And here, we can see it's within the ridge conservation character area, and that character area, of course, is intended to protect the steeper slopes in the county, and so requiring lower densities. And, of course, again, with this R1 zone district, it's the lowest density, highest restricted residential zone district in the Unified Zoning Ordinance, so this doesn't necessarily set any sort of precedent that would have the potential to threaten the integrity of the ridge. So, with all that being said, staff recommendation in this case is to approve. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
It does fall under estate in far as zoning, but they're talking about divide the subject property and...
That would be it. It's, this is, what this is proposing would be, there's a larger parent tract that, in order to be able to divide off this 1.42 acres, it would need to be rezoned. So, they have a survey, and that's what the subject property would be based on.
So, there's no further dividing going on?
Correct.
Okay. Questions? Anybody? Sorry. Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
Ms. Adams?
Thank you. My name is Janet Adams, 2835 Crow Valley Road, Tunnel Hill, Georgia. And the site that we're wanting to have rezoned, if you notice that little stovepipe to the north of it, that was the part of the original division, and that lot that's just to the south of it was all part of that eight-plus acre tract originally. And when we purchased it, my husband and I, with my son, who's here today, he, we had it subdivided, and he has that piece that's just south of it. It's a little over five acres, and we had almost three acres. And at the time that we did that, we weren't really, you know, we just wanted a place to put our house, and we wanted him to have the rest of it. We just wanted him beside us. And the driveway, we didn't realize at the time when they did the driveway, that they actually curved it up and it went on, if you look at the satellite image, you can see that that satellite, I mean, the driveway actually goes up on our portion back there. So, when we were, and at the time, we didn't pay a lot of attention with it. It was back in '22, and I had some health issues, going through some chemo, and my husband and my son were trying to take care of me, so I'm normally the one that watches out for these things. But when we got ready to do some of our estate planning just recently, we realized that that may be an issue for our son later. You know, hopefully, one of the kids will purchase the house, but, you know, if, you know, they were to sell it later, that would be an issue because his driveway did go up on our property. So, that's the reason. We just wanted that piece that's that stovepipe. We wanted to go ahead and need that over to him, which is what we'll be doing, hopefully, with your approval. And then, the part that is left is where our house is currently, the part that's in red, and that's the 1.42 acres that needs to be changed to the residential rating. No additional building is planned or anything of that nature.
Any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor? Anybody who'd like to speak in opposition? Very well, we will close the public portion on that request. Next one is to hear Daniel Blair seeking to rezone from R2 to GA, attractive land, 6.72 acres at 777 Nelson Kyle Road in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The request before us here is in order to rezone from the low-density, single-family residential zone district to general agriculture. The property's just in excess of the minimum five acres needed to be eligible for the general agriculture zone district. And we currently have a property that's developed with one single-family detached dwelling and a manufactured home. And so, the request is made in order for the petitioner's daughter, I believe it is, to be able to occupy the manufactured home, and that home has been vacant now for some time. The power has been detached from the panels, so in order to restore electric service to the property or to the manufactured home, it would need to be in conforming status with the county zoning ordinance. In order to do that, this rezoning would enable that to occur. So, let's look at the zoning map, and we'll see that we do have the subject property in the R2 zone district, and we can see three adjacent, four adjacent parcels to that, actually, and also some general agriculture adjacent to this property. And you can see that the dominant zone district in this area is general agriculture. Look at the aerial photograph would indicate, you can see some larger lots, some of those actually look to have agricultural character. The rest seem to be larger, single-family, low-density lots, large lots and single-family homes. Close look at the subject property, you can see kind of a large pasture property there with two dwellings, manufactured home and the single-family home. And this rezoning would not really alter what can be done with the subject property as it's too small for any major agricultural production, and, of course, the maximum achievable density on general agriculture would be two single-family dwellings on a single tract of land. This property's too small to be divided in GA, it already has two dwellings, so it wouldn't have any effect on the existing character of the subject property. And it's within the Rural Agricultural Reserve, which would be a perfect fit for the general agriculture zone district in the comprehensive plan. So, with all those factors, the staff and... So, with all those factors, the staff analysis, just a recommendation to approve. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
None? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Blair?
Hi, I'm Daniel Blair. I reside at 777 Nelson Kyle Road, Dalton, Georgia, 30721. As he spoke, the main reason that I would like for the property to be rezoned is so my daughter can move into the existing mobile home, manufactured home that was, been on the property. There's been one there since 1973, when my mother got married. It's been one there continuously, only in the last five years has it been unoccupied. And in that meantime, you know, they just, electricity and everything got turned off, and now my daughter is, desires to move there next to us, and I would like to.
Very good.
That's the primary reason. Also, with my daughter and son-in-law moving in, we plan on having a little small farm there, maybe a couple of head of cattle, and just to kind of make ourselves a little more self-sufficient.
Very good. Questions? None? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Is there anybody who'd like to speak in favor? Anybody who'd like to speak in opposition? Very well, we'll close the public portion on that request. Next one is to hear from Jerry Crowe. Mr. Crowe, thank you. Seeking to rezone from R2 to GA, five acres at 1634 Rollins Ketchum Road in the county. Ethan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Got another request here from R2 to GA. Similar to the previous rezoning, we've got a property that has exactly five acres, which, again, meets the minimum size for GA. Currently has a single-family, one single-family detached dwelling on it. And this request was made in order to basically bring the subject property into conforming status and being used for some agricultural production. Hay crop, I believe, is the primary use of the agricultural product on the subject property. The petitioner can, of course, go into greater detail about their historic and current future plans for this property. But we can see here on the zoning map as well, within the R2 zone district, we do see GA and R5 and some other zone districts in this area. So, this would create an island of GA. But in terms of spot zoning or concerns for that type of situation or scenario, in this case, I think what we're gonna see in a second, as we begin to look at some satellite imagery, is that the R2 zone district would indicate more of a suburban or a residential low-density environment. What we're gonna see is that this area, by the most part, is larger lots and really has more of an agricultural character than what we would typically see in an R2 neighborhood. So, here we can see that, again, larger lots, forested land, pastoral land. We do see some poultry houses to the north there on Lower Donville Road. And for those that are familiar with that area, there is a lot of agricultural land in this, along Lower Donville Road. So, this would bring the subject property into conformity, and from a standpoint of the character of the property, again, much like the previous, it's only five acres in size, greatly limits any sort of significant agricultural production, like poultry housing or any other type of development like that, intense agricultural production. Here's a close look at the subject property, has kind of some accessory buildings, single-family detached residents there, and you can see, again, quite a number, quite a few acres around the property that are sort of just pasture land. And it's within that emerging suburban area, so that's for areas of the county that could accommodate additional suburban development. Of course, we can see here that, again, most of those adjacent lots are large, larger lots, very little residential development at all at this point, at this location. So, it may still be some time before the growth pressures reach this area to suggest that additional residential density is in the market for this location. So, currently, the request is for general agriculture, and the only potential impact this could have on the property would be the potential to have a second dwelling in the future. So, other than that, there's no negative impacts observed if this were to be approved, and the recommendation from staff is to approve. Be happy to answer any questions.
If we look at this piece of property, five acres, but it goes to GA, so he could, as the last gentleman said, he could have cows on this property?
That's correct.
He could have livestock and animals?
It'd be limited by the, large livestock would be limited based on the size of the property and the type of animal, so there would be a cap on how many.
I'm just thinking about future residential development, if you're looking at that.
Certainly.
Any questions?
None? Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowe?
Jerry Crowe, 1634 Rollins Ketchum Road in Dalton. As the gentleman presented, it is for light agriculture, and we understand that, there's no heavy agriculture going on. Currently, this whole area that you see on the map that is fields and so on is agriculture, and for years it has been farmed. And whenever the county many years ago rezoned, a lot of that got rezoned to R2, and so, but over the years, many people have either leased the properties or used it, and I bought this portion off of that farm. And so, to continue to use it like it should be, and in conjunction with everything around it, that's why the request is to go general agriculture.
Do you have any other property around there that you own?
No. My neighbor and I lease some of the property south of that.
That's where you get your hay?
Part of it, yes. And part off of what I do.
Yeah, there's a lot of land right there where you can.
Well, and he and I do both. Matter of fact, he's here. And without speaking out of turn, and I have his permission, he is preparing to present, to turn, to request his to be put under that, hopefully by the next meeting. So, the other properties around that. So, don't see any further residential development, no time in the near futures.
Very good. Questions? Tell them. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who'd like to speak in favor? And here he comes.
My name's Chris Withrow. I live at 357 Lower Donville Road. My house is just east of the property. My driveway goes off of the Lower Donville Road. Some of the maps are not completely updated from ownership. I actually own the lots north, west, and south of this property, all the way around it. As he'd mentioned, he and I have been doing hay production and cattle on it for the last several years, since the original farmer passed away. Nothing has ever changed about this property, and for me and my family buying this property, nothing intends to change. That's what we bought this for, is for a farm. And even the adjacent people that I haven't owned, we also lease their property. So, we basically farm, I don't know what the total acreage is, there's about, close to 60 acres there now, I think. Brother Crowe just happens to be right in the middle of it, and we farm a big portion of his, even though it's small.
Very good.
So, we have no plans of it to change.
Very good. Thank you, sir. By the way, ma'am.
Excuse me. You mentioned you all already have cattle on this property? You have hay and cattle, or you just have hay?
We rotate. We do hay in the summer, and then sometimes bring some cattle in during winter. I have another farm down on Cedar Ridge, and so sometimes we'll bring them up closer to home during the winter and kind of rotate them back and forth.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is there anybody who'd like to speak in opposition? Very well, we'll close the public portion on that request. Next one is to hear from Deborah Kirk and Tony Silvers. Are you here? Very good. To rezone from M2 to R5, 25.69 acres at 743 Peak Road and 848 Cavender Road. These lots are in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have here a fairly straightforward rezoning. This request, from heavy manufacturing to rural residential, R5, was made in order to take the subject property, which currently contains three single-family detached dwellings, and bring it into a conforming status with the unified zoning ordinance. And, again, this has been developed for quite a number of years. You can see it's made up of multiple tracts, and, again, of this property altogether, there are three single-family dwellings currently on it. We see that the R5 zone district is the most common zone district in this area, and it is another one of these areas that's complex in the sense that we have a convergence of the manufacturing zone district with residential zone district, so we see a mix of development here. So, when we look at the subject property, it is adjacent to some actual conforming manufacturing zoning, but it's also majority of the adjacent property being single-family residential, and something comparable to that in R5. So, this would maintain or create conformity on the subject property based on its existing development. It would also reflect the majority of adjacent property in terms of zoning and land use. And there, again, a closer look at the property, you can see some of these single-family dwellings, rooftops there. And it's within the suburban neighborhood of the comprehensive plan, which, as we mentioned earlier, is to protect the integrity of the single-family neighborhoods and areas. So, this rezoning would be a perfect fit for the comprehensive plan at this area with the existing zoning and land use. So, the staff recommendation is to approve, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Peak Road. How's Peak Road gonna do with the additional traffic if you put X number of houses on there? Is that any concern, I guess?
Well, with it having redundant access to the road to the north, as well as Peak Road, if this property were to potentially be developed in the future, then, you know, that would be part of the subdivision review process, and, of course, any sort of improvements that might need to be made. County engineer could require that, like in A-cell, D-cell lanes or other types of improvements that might need to occur. But having the redundant access, which they'll both ultimately feed into Peak Road, but having that redundant access on a property this size that were to be developed gives that opportunity to have two points of ingress egress for emergency as well as peak hours, not to be a pun for Peak Road, but, so that would be, that would have to be reviewed in that case. But given the fact that it's zone M2, you could legitimately raise the property and put a small manufacturing property or warehouse on this and run commercial trucks in and out, so residential's really gonna have a lesser effect, and I think, in that term. And, again, the county engineer would have the final say in the plat approval process for any improvements.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
Ms. Kirk? Mr. Silvers?
Tony Silvers, 743 Peak Road, 30721. I'll be speaking for my wife, Dana Silvers, and Deborah Kirk.
Okay.
The reason for the rezoning is our daughter is getting married, and she's wanting to build a house on the property. So, that's the whole reason for the rezoning. And it's all family property, the whole thing. So, they will, as far as we're concerned, it's gonna stay family property, and we'd just like for our daughter to have a home place close to us.
Excellent.
Eat plants for a horse?
Maybe, just one.
Don't mess things up, Eric.
So, if you're just planning on putting one other house on there, could you zone at R2, or that doesn't work here? Okay, I guess everything is R5 next to it, so, okay, I understand what you're saying. Thank you.
All right, gentlemen? Thank you, sir. Is anybody else who'd like to speak in favor? Anybody who'd like to speak in opposition? Excellent. We will continue on to the next request. Larry Moss, are you here? Thank you. Larry Moss is seeking to rezone attractive land from low-density, single-family residential, R2 suburban agriculture SA, 9.69 acres located on Prospect Road in the county. Ethan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a property here currently undeveloped, zoned R2, requesting to be rezoned to SA suburban agriculture, just under 10 acres in total size. We can see it as a sort of a flag lot, so you have a narrow access point to the highway or to the street to the east, and then the property opens up more toward the rear, and it's, again, just under 10 acres in size. This request is made in order to have the option to divide this property through family easement, and that would mean that you could have individual ownership, individual tracts of land, each of those not having road access, but a family easement in order to traverse across those properties and access each individual lot. Granted, if this property were rezoned SA, the minimum size for a lot would be three acres. So, that would put the maximum number of additional lots to be created would be three. So, this doesn't significantly increase any sort of density or change, you know, really what the character is of this area. It was just formerly developed where the minor lots were divided off on the road frontage, and then these larger flag lots were left toward the rear of the property. So, this would allow for a further division of the property, and, of course, this would be limited strictly to immediate family members through the family easement exemption. And then, of course, many years in the future, those can be sold off, fee simple, but in order to actually divide those properties, they'll have to be done through the family easement exemption. So, just a quick backstory on that. Of course, you can see the subject property is within the R2 zone district. You can see this area is another area where you have agricultural, we've had some development in recent years. So, we do see the R5 and the R2 zone districts here, and the SA is kind of a fit in between general agriculture and R2, again, allowing essentially only single-family detached dwellings and minimum lot size of three acres. So, again, very similar to what we see on the adjacent lots. There's our aerial photographs, so you can see some of that's not been updated recently, so the former properties have been essentially logged and now are vacant, larger vacant tracts. So, you can see here, larger properties, and then the smaller residential properties along the roadways have essentially been developed. It's within the rural agricultural reserve, which would be a perfect fit for the suburban agriculture zone district, so it would accomplish the need of the petitioner, would not conflict with the comprehensive plan, and we don't believe it will have any negative impact on the zoning or values of the adjacent properties, given the similarity of SA and R2. Be happy to answer any questions. Recommendation is to approve.
Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
Mr. Moss?
My name's Robert Beavers. I'm representing Mr. Moss today. My address is 174 Evening Way, Rocky Face, Georgia. We're requesting that the aforementioned tract of land, 9.69 acres on Prospect Road, be rezoned from R2 to suburban agriculture to take advantage of some of the options that the SA zoning offers, namely, the family easement option.
Very well. Anything else?
Thank you for your consideration.
Is there?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else who'd like to speak in favor? Anybody who'd like to speak in opposition? That said, we will close the public portion on that request. Next one is to hear from Elise Perez. Are you here? Elise Perez?
The sellers are here. The people who own the property now are here, and they're representing this rezone.
Jean, shake her head. Jean, shake her head.
Who is requesting it, so?
So the applicant's not here.
Even though the applicant's not the owner at this time?
No. The owner at, at this time is Mr. Cochran, who is here.
But he's not requesting it.
He didn't make the application?
Did join the application?
Wrongly made.
He signed the application.
Who, Elise?
Mr. Cochran signed it.
Mr. Cochran did?
He's not requesting it. Well, that's not the name of the seller.
Do you have the application, Jean?
Right here.
But she's not the owner.
They're not on it at all? Other than they own the property?
Well, we would just need to postpone for a month and see if she's...
He was listed as the owner.
She's listed as the owner?
He, he's listed as the owner.
Oh, he is, okay.
But Ms. Perez has filled out the application and s- it's, all the correspondence has been with her and...
Okay.
She'll need to have a power of attorney to proceed for a court.
They will go follow it next time.
All right, so, uh, I'm afraid we're gonna have to post this, postpone this till next month on, uh, on advice. They will have to be here, since they are the ones that...
Or, or have a power of...
Or have a power of attorney. So we're gonna set that one aside. Next one is to hear from Maria Salasius. Salasius, uh, to rezone from R2 to R5, a tract of land, .62 acres at 1479 Lafayette Road. This one is in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we do have, uh, this request to rezone from low-density, single-family R2 to rural residential R5. Properties a little over a half an acre in size. Currently contain a manufactured home. And so the petitioner's request was to bring the subject property back into conformity. Uh, I believe it has been vacant now for some time, much like the, uh, previous request. So first and foremost, we do see that it is within, uh, the R2 zone district. We do see that as the majority of zoning around the subject property. But we do see the R5 zone district adjacent to the south, accessing Lafayette Road just to the west or southwest of the property. We also see the suburban agriculture zone district here. So it's not a, uh, entire, in complete, R2 zone district or some other areas of the county are. Um, we do have the adjacent R5 zone district as well as SA. Here we can see the development in this area, uh, mostly single-family detached development. We do have some larger lots, again, zone R5 and SA. Close look at the subject property, does have that manufactured home, uh, that has been there for some time. And, uh, the petitioner's request to be able to restore conformity to the subject property to reoccupy the manufactured home. And here we have it within the Rural Agricultural Reserve. And so that, uh, is essentially, again, an area where you're trying to preserve rural and agricultural low-density. Uh, based on what we see here, the lot size is what it is. It's not going to be subdivided any further regardless of what the zoning change is. So therefore, the density of the subject property is not going to change based on the zoning in this case. So it's gonna have no impact on the existing unit per acre density or any future unit per acre density of this area. So we do not anticipate that to have any negative impact regarding the, uh, intent of the comprehensive plan at this area, this location. So the recommendation in this case is to approve, uh, to restore this property into conformity. Be happy to answer any questions.
Manufactured houses? Go back to the other picture, please. Back one more. There's some zoning in there, some areas in there zoned for R5. Is there manufactured housing in any of these areas that are on Lafayette Road?
I did not identify any, um, that I could say were, were manufactured homes conclusively.
But this one's been there for a while?
It has been for quite, quite some time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
Ms. Salasius?
Maria?
Maria?
I never saw her raise her hand when you called her first time.
Oh, Maria.
It's not Maria? Sorry about that. We will move on to the next. Next one to, to hear from Cody Spence. Are you here, Cody?
Sorry, I'm here.
It's all right. He's seeking to rezone from M2 to R5, a parcel, .41 acres located at 228 Wagner Drive. This one is in the county.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have a request here, fairly straightforward, uh, request from heavy manufacturing to R5, that rural residential. In this case, we do see, uh, that it's in a large manufacturing zone district. But, uh, when we take a look at the aerial photograph in just a moment, you'll see that that is not the predominant land use around the subject property. Essentially, all adjacent property surrounding the subject property is developed for residential use. And we see new development. Uh, some of you all may recall on the planning commission, a rezoning by Brian Spence, I believe it was, just to the north across Wagner Drive, uh, in the last few years. So we can see some development, similar zoning adjacent to this property. There again, we can see the DMV to the north there, but we also see to the south, east, and west residential development, some of that being multifamily. So the potential for things like duplexes in the R5 zone district do not pose any sort of threat or change in character to the area, as it's already been established here on multiple adjacent properties, as well as some of that new development to the north. So this would allow, uh, at a maximum, again, duplex dwellings and single-family detached residential dwellings. And, uh, based on the subject property, it could be divided. But again, as you can see, is, is, uh, fairly limited in size. So we're not looking at potential for a great number of units. Here, uh, we see a close, closer view. Again, it could essentially probably be divided into two, two single-family dwellings or perhaps a, a single duplex dwelling. Petitioner may have done a little more due diligence and could give us a little more information on what their, uh, lot measurements are, their potential for, uh, future development. But that's just a, a quick look at the area and a quick look at the subject property. Again, you can see the multifamily to the east. You can see some, uh, manufactured homes to the west. It's within that emerging suburban character area. So this is an area that is intended to, uh, accommodate additional infill and residential development. So this would fit perfectly with the intent of the comprehensive plan based on the existing zoning and development adjacent to the property. So the recommendation from staff is to approve, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Cody?
Hey, uh, Cody Spence, 2793 Barry Bennett Road, Chatsworth. And, um, I think Ethan pretty well summed it up. Don't really have much to add to that. Just looking to, uh, subdivide the property into two parcels, uh, for single-family residential.
I noticed across the street, uh, Brian's got two parcels, second and third from the top, that shared driveways. Are you thinking about doing something like that?
I would prefer not, but I guess that would be up to public works.
No, I'm just trying to see what you're thinking about doing.
No, I mean, I would prefer they have individual driveways, just on the two lots.
Excuse me?
Excuse me?
Enough road frontage?
Saying you have enough frontage.
Yeah, yeah. It exceeds the minimum by 15 feet.
Very good. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody else like to speak in favor? Anybody like to speak in opposition? And we will close the public portion of that request and move on to Don Howe. Are you here? Okay. Seeking to re- seeking special use permit to expand the ves- existing event center with existing G8 agricultural zone district. It's got 60.72 acres on the right of way of Crow Valley Road. Ethan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, again, this is switching gears from zoning to, uh, special use permits, which again, would maintain the existing underlying zoning and allow special use in this case would be the expansion of an existing special use, and that being an event center. That event center was, uh, the permit was granted for that back in, uh, 2017 and has been in operation since, uh, changed owners, I believe, in, in that timeframe. So the petitioner is requesting to, uh, expand the event center. It has been successful, and there is significant amount of additional room on the subject property to accommodate some additional structures. So their request would be to expand the existing event center. If we'll take a look at subject property, uh, again, we saw the zoning. Again, zoning's not going to change, uh, here. And, uh, into the, uh, existing development, this is a property with a, a lot of topography through this area, uh, without a topo map. There's a stream essentially that runs north to south, sort of bisects the subject property and a lot of those other properties in the area. So there's some topography there, mostly forested, very rural character in this area. So within the rural residential character area in the comprehensive plan, and that is ultimately intended to protect the integrity of that rural and agricultural character of the area. And of course, again, this would not change the underlying general agriculture zoning, uh, where ultimately the existing character of the subject property would simply allow for the development of a few additional structures, which we can see here, shown on this, uh, attached site plan. One key point to mention is that, uh, while this would allow, uh, if it's approved, this would allow, uh, the expansion of this property based on the site plan that they have submitted to us here. And of course, not necessarily to the exact foot and the size of the, of the buildings. There is some discretion given for the zoning administrator to determine, uh, as this is, uh, being developed, that it fits the, uh, integrity or the intent of this site plan that would be approved. And so therefore, any sort of significant increase or expansion of this use in the future would require the petitioner or the property owner at that time to come back to the planning commission, just like they're doing now, uh, should there be any additional change. This doesn't necessarily just create an, uh, infinite, uh, opportunity for this property. It is limited to what they have submitted to us. And you can see that here on this site plan with some additional parking and a few additional structures. Staff recommendation in this case is to approve. They have shown on the site plan, uh, ample additional parking to be created to service the additional structures. And, uh, overall, very, uh, limited amount of development on the property with the intent to maintain the existing character. So the, the forested area, natural appearance of the property, as I'm sure that is largely the appeal for the event center. The recommendation is to approve based on no anticipated negative impact and, uh, plenty of room for them to expand. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
My name is Don Howe, 10905 Howe Farms Way, Georgetown, Tennessee. Uh, we own and operate the largest wedding venue in Tennessee. And, uh, we've been, uh, best of the best for the last seven years in a row. We've owned this property for three years, and it's our eighth year as a wedding venue down here in Tunnel Hill. And we're excited to bring additional opportunity for employment to this area.
Howe Farms?
Yeah, you've, you've heard of us?
I got kids at that age where all their buddies are getting married, so...
We may see you.
We've, we've been there.
Yeah. Yeah, questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does anybody else who'd like to speak in favor? Anybody who'd like to speak in opposition? Very well, that closes the public portion on that request. And at this time, that is all the county commissioners, so they will be leaving us at this time. And we still have one more, which is within the city of Dalton. And this is David Armstrong. He's back there. He's seeking to rezone from high-density residential R7 to rural residential R5, tract of land, 1.9 acres along Walston Avenue. Uh, this one is in the city of Dalton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, this property was rezoned, uh, back in September of 2023 to the R7 zone district, which it currently exists as today. The petitioner's request would be to rezon to R5. The petitioner's request was made in order to develop this with single-family detw- detached or duplex dwellings on this property that would occupy individual lots rather than them being all on a single tract of land as they would be in the R7 zone district. We look at zoning in this area. We see the larger property to the east, uh, in that property zone. High-density residential does contain a large apartment complex. The subject property and the other, uh, lot, uh, adjacent to it that's also zoned R7 are undeveloped. And, uh, the adjacent zoning to the north is the R2 zone district. And of course, uh, that's, uh, already developed, which we'll see in, uh, oh, there's the, uh, city boundary. And then here we have the aerial photographs. So again, you can see the multifamily development to the east. So the subject property could currently be developed for an apartment, uh, and those type of uses. The condition that was placed on this property back when it was rezoned in 2023 was that access, uh, be limited to Walston Avenue and not, uh, Wall Street, given the, for those familiar with that area, as most of us probably are, there's, uh, site visibility issues and access issues. You wouldn't want to have those vehicles accessing in that curve over the hill. So that was the con- condition at that point in time. Of course, the subject property, as it is here, doesn't have enough frontage really for an access point on Wall Street, would be limited to Walston Avenue. So this request really wouldn't change the potential land use of this property. You could have both single-family dwellings, duplex dwellings, apartment dwellings, quadplexes, and everything in between in the high-density residential zone district. This would simply allow the subject property to be divided with individual lots. And based on the amount of, uh, high-density residential dwell- or high-density residential zoning and development, that would not create any sort of disruption in the character of this area. So the recommendation is to approve based on those factors. Be happy to answer any questions.
So on R5, how many dwellings could you put on there, probably on this 1.9 acres?
Less than R7. Less than the R7.
Oh, I realize it's less than R7, I'm just curious.
It would be, uh, in terms of single-family, the smallest, uh, lot width you could have would be 50 feet. Uh, so it, it'll depend on, I, you know, to give you an exact answer, I, I, I don't have an exact answer here. But essentially, every 50 feet, you can have a lot on a property of this size with sewer service. So I would say somewhere to the tune of upwards of 10.
Okay. But less than R7, thank you.
Much less, yes, sir.
All right, thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
Mr. Armstrong?
Uh, David Armstrong, 2904 Rochenberg Road, Dalton. And it's pretty much what he said. Uh, the previous owner, I just recently bought, but on the adjacent corner, we were marketed to sell to do a big apartment complex. I since bought her out and rezoned, so I've just, I'm gonna split it up and either do duplexes or houses on. I know you asked for how many there, but I mean, yeah, I'm still going lower density than the R7. So it'd be, of course, how many I can get, 50-foot lots on. So that's basically it, so.
Is the other property that you purchased already R5?
Um, excuse me?
Is the other property that you purchased already R5?
No, I zoned it to R7.
Okay.
It's already R7, so I can build something more there if I wanted to do a quadplex. It's already R7, so I can build something more there if I wanted to do a quadplex.
That would be right on Walnut, I mean, West Wal?
It's actually on Walston. I have access already approved there on that, so, yeah. I just bought the other thing, so that's it, so. But, yeah, I'm actually going down in density, so...
I like it. I'm just trying to understand. I got it. Wait, Octavio, is he going down in dens- yes.
Well, it's just kinda, to me, you'd have to come and do going down in density for rezoning, you know?
Yeah, that's, that's a no brainer, right?
Yeah. Uh, any other questions?
Uh, no, that's it, thank you. Does anybody else like to speak in favor? Anybody like to speak in opposition? Excellent. Well, that closes all requests for the open portion of this meeting. We will go, go into closed meeting, which means you will not be able to participate. You can stay and listen, but you will not be able to add anything or talk. Okay, guys. Let's go back to, first things first. Shazman Ali.
You know, I, I get the subdivision is there, but, but my opinion is that's a heavily industrialized area, manufacturing. Nobody from the subdivision seems to mind that it's getting rezoned. There's no opposition.
I make, I make a provision to zone as C2.
Second.
All right, Octavio makes motion, Chris seconds, all in favor of approval? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Next one's Janet Adams, seeking to rezone, let's see which one this one. Oh, that's a small place. Yep. G8 or R1? Yeah, that's one basically estate planning purposes.
Move approved.
Chris makes a motion to approve. Brad seconds. All in favor say aye. All opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, we missed at first, uh... On the agenda, let's see, on the regular meeting, we had Morgan Robinson, that's from last month.
Yep.
And here are these from the...
Right here.
Oh, from that part, yeah.
In order to determine whether or not she can get a permit or a manufactured home on non-conformity policy, and then there the paperwork shows the lapse in time and that the building officials would not grant the permit that near place given that time period was too far. So the only way that they'll be able to get that manufactured home there would be with a rezoning.
Which, we were, okay, so we tabled it for this.
Your analysis was to deny.
Since it was tabled, can she come back?
No. It was not tabled.
For rezoning.
Uh, that, if it's approved, yes, if it's denied, then it'd be one year before she could reapply for a rezoning.
Okay, so what's the next step for her, let me put it that way?
In terms of having a manufactured home?
Yeah, or coming to this commission.
If we deny it, she's gotta wait a year.
If you deny it, it'll be a year before she can come back. There's no other, I mean, you could develop property. Property could have a single-family dwelling, maybe two, based on the size of the road access, but manufactured home would require a rezoning.
Remember this is...
Now, there's nothing on it.
Remember this is the lady that, you know, that...
Yeah, they bought the property.
They bought it and before they kinda...
Okay, let's just make sure there's not another step that she could take before it gets put off for 12 months.
Yeah, I saw it.
She's here. If we had questions for her.
Well, you just can't have it in the morning factor home.
You can't.
Yeah, I, I would make the motion that we deny the request, follow up with what Ethan has said, if that's something that we're voting on tonight.
Okay, so Steve makes the motion to deny.
Second.
Octavio seconds, all in favor of denial? Say aye.
Aye.
One, two, three, four, Chris? Uh, it's unanimous toward denial. Okay.
Daniel Blair.
Yeah, Daniel Blair.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Octavio makes most approve, Chris seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, Daniel Blair. Jerry Crow. This is to bring it to conforming status. Now, that's where, that's with all the hay.
Make a motion to approve.
Well, can I have some real quick discussion here?
Sure.
The only concern I have is, I've looked at this thing, and it is, it's not a dead center of that, of that R2 area, but there's nothing developed there. I guess that's not a...
No, there isn't.
Since there's, there's no risk, because there's nothing else to being developed, right?
No, you're going less, less density, more, more restrictive, and it's historically been farmed for decades, you know, and...
That's what I'm thinking.
Well, you know, when we came in and did the zoning maps, whatever year that was, you know, they don't all exactly line up with the historical use of the property. In this case, it's been a farm for forever before those maps were ever, you know, created and zoning was applied, so...
Okay.
Motion to approve.
So, Octavio makes motion to approve.
Second.
Brad seconds, all in favor of approval?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Okay. Deborah Kirk and Tony Silvers, conforming status.
Make a motion to approve that one.
Eric makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Steve seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, it is approved.
Steve.
Steve. Next one is Larry Moss.
Make a motion to approve.
Octavio makes a motion to approve.
Second.
Brad seconds, all in favor say aye for approval?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Next two are tabled.
Next two are tabled, not present or improper, not present. Cody Spence.
Move approved.
Chris makes a motion to approve. Eric seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Special use.
Move to approve.
Second.
Octavio makes a motion to approve, Chris seconds, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. David Armstrong, this is the one on Walston.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Larry and Chris seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Gee?
Nothing.
Nothing?
She brought cookies.
Okay, with, how's the business with Sheldon Jerry?
I'm gonna burn your hair.
Pretty good for that many.
We didn't, we didn't earn our lunch or dinner. Thank you. Good to see you.
How's business?
Still crazy.
I'll see you in about a month.
Yeah, yeah.
Need somebody to speak up? Sometimes everybody just looks around. That's good.